Okay, we will call the meeting to order at 7:03. Um, point of clarification for the agenda under policy review. It says first vote on, um, that should be first read. Okay, so moving forward, uh, we will open it up for public hearing. If anyone from the public wishes to speak.
I'm looking for a from the school committee?
This is the school committee meeting.
All right. So I'm, uh, trying to work on a CPA grant and I'd like sponsorship from the school committee to build a pavilion at the elementary school. All right. My name is Nathan Moja. I live on Pratt Corner Road. My daughter just started preschool this year. And, uh, in getting to know the teachers, I told Grace I'm a carpenter and I run a sawmill in town and she was excited that maybe we could work together on building a pavilion for arts and crafts outside of the preschool and kindergarten rooms. And, um, so we started talking about that and got on the email list with, uh, Ms. Mendoza and the priest and the kindergarten teacher and talked about ideas and moving that forward. And so the first step I took was to get a engineered plan from a building inspector and show that to, I showed that to the buildings committee last night and they seemed to think that that was a good idea and it could move forward. And then to get a grant would be the best way to push that along. And then they said the school committee could help by sponsoring that grant. And so that's where I'm at. And I don't know what the process is for giving a sponsorship if it's a written thing or I can just put it onto my application. And, uh, here I am. Is that enough?
Well, I think, I think part of it too is, and we haven't even actually spoken in person about this, but, um, part of the issue is that the deadline is the fourth, which is why I feel like he thought he had to come to this meeting and use public session to talk about it because the deadline's quite quick on a turnaround.
Is that something that we could just vote on and say that we support and that would be enough? Or do we need to document it somehow?
So normally we have a vote on the agenda ahead of time, but we do have the caveat that says agenda items are those that are reasonably anticipated. Not all items listed may be discussed and other items not listed may be brought up. So I understand that there's a short deadline, so I think you could have a discussion and then decide as a body, um, to sponsor it, but because you operate as a body, it would have to be a vote.
Can I ask a couple of follow-up questions? First, it's lovely that you have the skills and you're willing to help out, so I want to start there. Um, but second, I'm just wondering, will we see like what the proposal for the grant is? And, um, can we, can you just maybe email us what you presented to the buildings committee?
I can, yeah. And I think that this first step is a rough draft. Google that. This is to say that I cannot apply for the grant. And then there, there'll be like a real and, uh, I can't, someone on the buildings committee knew the engineer that had stamped the plan and was said that they might be able to get that plan restamped to move along. So there will be like a real plan at the next stage. But for now, it's, it's a drawing that was approved for the Northampton food co-op, something food share and since has been built. So there's like real, real photos of the finished product as well. I could, um, I could email it and then I don't know how to email it to everyone though. Would I send it to the school committee?
Jackie, go ahead.
So there, there still needs to be a whole lot discussed here. For example, he can't actually build it. Um, and, and he knows that it has to go through bigger in terms of like approved people and building and buying of materials. Um, but luckily his skills and knowledge will help push this forward and a lot of it, but like I haven't seen it either and I don't exactly know where it would go and we need to have more conversations around all of that. But the point of it, and I think that's all we kind of need to know here before like any final things get made. The point of it is that you know, he did all of that legwork in terms of trying to talk to the town for that preservation grant money, which is huge and is willing to be the main sponsor of it, which is huge. Um, and we're really appreciative of that. Um, but this is like real beginning stages and I just kind of wanted to put that out there too.
And the highway department sponsored it as well. Steve came on the meeting last night. It was like, yep, we, we need, we'd like that. Highway board department is on board.
So because there needs to be more clarification, could the vote be something like approve the sponsorship of writing the grant and then that's just a small piece of it and then we can continue along the process? One and two, if I forgot your name. Is it Nate?
No.
Nate, if Nate could email it to Pam Rogers, my executive assistant, she's the keeper of the records for all school committee. Um, then she could send it out and then she would also have a record of this at central office.
Great.
And your hands up.
So I think that, um, if we just, uh, a vote to, um, allow him to apply for the grant, I think when, when you say sponsor the grant application, does that mean just that it's done in our name? Or so we become the applicants for the grant or, um, we're just endorsing your application?
Right. I think you're endorsing it and it helps it move along.
Okay. And then the second question is what, what is the size of the grant?
Uh, to be determined.
What is the anticipated cost of the project?
Uh, I don't have an anticipated cause necessarily because it has to go through a licensed insured and bonded contractor. They're gonna have a real idea of what it's gonna have a roughly sixteen by twelve concrete poured slab is going to be built on. I am gonna potentially provide lumber from Shootsberry, which will help defray some of the costs, but then there's like turning the timbers, turning like the timbers into a post and beam frame is gonna be, there's a lot of different parts and then the roofing material. So we've come up with some of the materials, but I don't know what the actual cost would be. There are other pavilions that were built with CPA grants that are listed on this through the town website. I found those. So there's a range of costs.
And it's so my, my last follow-up question, sorry, is, um, if you get the grant and then somehow the grant is not enough money to cover all of the costs and fundraising fails, then are there any consequences to not being able to use the grant?
I'm not sure.
Okay.
I haven't applied for or talked to the, uh, oh, conservation, not conservation. This is my, I haven't got that far yet, but I'm sure that'll become clear. Right now that I'm, I'm looking for help to sponsor it so I can actually apply and then I'll be learning a lot more quickly. Hopefully.
Steve, your hands up.
Yeah, I just wanted to say we, I, I mentioned to Nate last night when he brought this forward to the buildings committee that it would be the more people on board, the merrier it would be and it would look really good for his application. But yeah, so the only fault is if it doesn't get built because there's not enough money, the money just goes back. It, it, there's nothing wrong with trying and, and not succeeding this first time.
Thanks, Steve.
Hey, are there any further questions? For Nate?
Looks like Jackie has one. Okay. I was just gonna say the only experience I have around this was when Jessica did it for the track and, um, and the, the school committee was, did not do that. They did not write or they weren't the author of that grant. Jessica was, but they supported the grant. And I think that that's what Nate is trying to say is that Jessica did the legwork and a lot of the pieces for the track, um, which is what Nate would, would do. Um, but the school committee just supported the idea of the track and that's the only experience I have around it.
Anna?
Can I make a motion? I move to allow Nate to uh, write a grant and for the Shootsberry School Committee to sponsor his application.
Okay, all those in favor?
I. Anna says I.
Marta, I.
Taylor, I.
Rose, I. Okay.
Hey, I'd also just like to, I'd also like to say Nate, as a former carpenter and timber framer, if we get to the stage of building it, I'm happy to help too.
Terrific. Thank you. Thank you. That was very productive.
Yeah.
Is there a down to push some, uh, plans along? So you could, the preliminary plan would be?
I'm sorry, you cut out. Could you repeat the question?
Is there an email that I could have or is there an email so I could push these plans along to all of you?
Yep, yep. You could send it to Rogers, R O G E R S.
Yeah.
At Irving with an E dot com or E R V I N G dot com. And then Pam Rogers will send it out to the committee.
At Rogers.
Rogers at Irving dot com.
I got it.
Okay.
Terrific. Thank you for your support.
Yes, Steve.
I have a couple of, this is a whole different topic. My first one is I just want to say that here we, the cameras were installed in August and here it is almost December 1st. And there's no policy in place yet as to the use of cameras. I understand the administration gave you promises that who was gonna see it and who wasn't, but as far as being a public body, you really should have a policy in place already for the use of the cameras. And my other, other thing is I'd like you, I'd like the school committee to request from the administration that they start including again in your packets, the number of students that attend the school and the breakdown of those that are school choice and those that are not, because I learned today for the first time that the fourth grade only has eight to 10 students in it. And for the last two and a half years, the school committee has not, actually it was since the previous, a year before the previous secretary changed jobs that we haven't seen or you will not see numbers of students attending school and especially now that you're getting into the, um, budget season, you really should see on a monthly basis or whenever the principal's report comes out, how many students are attending school and how many are school choice? Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Um, are there any further public comments? Okay, not hearing any. We'll move forward. Um, we've, I don't have any updates on the perpetual calendar review of agenda, so we'll keep moving, uh, to Warren's. And are there any gifts?
Okay, sorry. So I've got for payroll batch three oh nine from ten thirty-one in the amount of eighty-five thousand nine eighty-eight and sixty-five cents. I've got batch three ten from eleven fourteen in the amount of eighty-seven thousand nine hundred and sixty-four dollars and eighty-seven cents. And from eleven twenty-eight, batch three eleven with, uh, eighty-six thousand three hundred and twenty-two and thirty-eight cents. And then for vouchers, we've got thirty twelve from eleven fourteen in the amount of fourteen thousand eight hundred and sixty-three thousand, I'm sorry, eight hundred and sixty-three and fifteen cents. Uh, and from eleven twenty-eight voucher number thirty thirteen in the amount of forty-five thousand one hundred and eighty-seven dollars and thirty-two cents. And then numbers thirty fourteen from December twelfth in the amount of four thousand two hundred and three dollars and seventy-sevens.
Okay.
Um, Jen, sorry, Jen, could you repeat the date for three eleven, please?
Yes. It is eleven twenty-eight.
Thank you.
Okay, um, gifts, is there anything to report? No?
We do.
I'm sorry.
No gifts. We do have, um, two grants.
Yes.
Um, the REAP grant for sixteen thousand three hundred and ninety-seven dollars and rural aid for eighty-six thousand three hundred and seventeen dollars and ninety-six cents.
And we need an acceptance vote on those?
Yes.
Can we have a motion for acceptance vote on the REAP and rural aid grants?
A move?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Anna, I.
My, you, I.
Taylor, I.
Marta, I.
Rose, I. Okay, moving forward, we have approval of minutes from the October nineteenth meeting can if there's no.
I actually, I think I might have one quick amendment.
Okay, go ahead.
Hold on, let me just pull it up for a sec. I think at the top of page three, there's just a typo in noted. It said Jennifer noted. And there's just a quick typo that just needs to be fixed.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay. Jen, go ahead.
It also might be helpful just to distinguish which Jen it is, even with a last name, just a little um, apostrophe, whatever, whatever you can put in, it might be good distinguishing.
Yeah, the convention I've used since, um, the superintendent has been in her position is to use Jennifer for her. Um, and then, uh, Jen is for you, Taylor, Jen Taylor.
Thank you, Trevor. Okay, so do we have a motion to approve the minutes with Julie's edit?
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Heard I.
My, you, I.
Taylor, I.
Rose, I. Okay, next on the agenda is unfinished business. I don't know if we have any updates or anything we need to discuss on capital projects or the building process.
Okay, I do not have any updates on that.
Okay. All right. Then we will zip right along into new business. Um, we have the family handbook listed for review and possible vote. I know Jackie, you sent out the, um,
The link?
The link for the, the handbook.
Yeah, it should be, it is pretty updated. Now it's enough where if people looked at it and wanted to approve it, it's, it's great. There's a few things that I might want to add, like for example, we gotta put in the dog policy when that has been approved, but it's just, we, what, as you probably have seen, we're trying to just link a lot of stuff to policy so that we're not doubling up on things. So it's just a little more streamlined. Um, and so, uh, it will automatically be linked into that, but we might want to bring, I might want to bring it to you so that it's just then accepted again into the handbook so that it's just, you know, very accurate document, but, but the, everything else, um, the nurse is back from, from not maternity leave, from medical leave. She did not have a baby. Um, and, uh, and so she was able to, to fix up some of the stuff on, on her pieces. So.
So process wise, Jackie and I talked, she'll just say, you know, the policy for service animals has been approved. It's now linked into the handbook. Can we just vote to accept that piece? That way we're not holding off on the handbook.
Yeah, because I would like to, uh, link it live and get it out to the, the updated one out to families. Like, for example, something happened today where, you know, we do have, uh, we do have a procedure in the handbook that, uh, the kids are expected to wear coats when it's thirty-nine degrees and below, basically. Um, and it's very helpful to reference that when we have some really adamant fifth and sixth graders. So, um, that's just one little example.
Okay, um, does anybody have any questions on the handbook? Okay, not seeing any. Do we have a motion, um, to approve the family handbook?
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Heard I. Marta.
My, you, I.
Taylor, I.
Rose, I.
And thank you to Debbie Lee because she was the mastermind behind that setup and I, I personally really like it.
Yeah. Um, next is, uh, school improvement plan review.
Yeah, so this is a review and it's, um, because we haven't completely updated it with the school council yet. We're hoping to do that in December. But when you write a SIP anyway, it's usually for more than one year and that was just approved last year. Um, and I'm, I'm happy to talk about it, but I'm wondering because we have to talk about the budget, if you would rather me just bring the updated one in December? Um, and we can just talk about all there since it's not going to be different than what was voted in last year. Um, and, uh, and then that way we're saving some time.
I'm fine with that. I'm seeing head nods. Does anybody oppose that idea?
Because you already know what I'm gonna say. It's posted on our website too, so.
Okay, all right. So continuing on, uh, Nico, we need to, um, select two members of this committee to serve on the negotiation subcommittee. Um, and as a reminder, and Jen and Jackie jump in if I am screwing up the explanation of this, but I believe this is to negotiate, is it the contract as a whole or salary with the teachers?
Oh, yes, contract and that would be salary and if there's any language changes. So yes, you are right on target.
Okay, um, so that is our goal for this evening. We need two members to serve on that committee.
When do contract negotiations start?
I'm sorry?
When, 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 what's the timeframe?
Um, as soon as we have members voted in, then we can reach out to um, Attorney Duberay, who will reach out to the MTA representative and say we're ready to move forward. So soon, soon, very soon.
Is there any sense on the, um, the time commitment that that will entail as well?
I have no idea what the time commitment is. And it's all dependent on how negotiations go, you know, like it could be a very swift thing or it could be a prolonged thing.
Um, one of the questions I have with the negotiation piece, especially with salary is that you know, we have an understanding of what our budget is, at least I do. Um, I don't know what our capacity is, you know, if I can, you, you can look at it and say, okay, well, if you know, somebody's coming into the negotiation and wants a seventy-five percent increase in pay, okay, that's extreme. We're not going to do that, but I don't. Is there a separate discussion as to what our capacity is? I don't, you know, so when we're going into the negotiations, we have some idea what our framework is? Jennifer?
Yep. So once we have the negotiating subcommittee voted in, the next meeting could have, um, an executive session where you talk about what are the parameters relative to the budget? And although we aren't the negotiating agents, Caitlin or I, you can consult with us around, uh, financial matters or language matters, um, and we're more than happy to do that. So my suggestion would be after we have the two, um, members voted in tonight, that at a December meeting, we might have a quick executive session to talk about um, our budgetary parameters and that will help you moving forward with negotiations.
Okay, that would be helpful. Jeremy, go ahead.
Yeah, and maybe it's, or maybe this is contained in what Jennifer was just explaining, but like if the negotiations change our budget, like I know we're supposed to have our numbers kind of nailed down by December. I'm totally new to this whole thing, but like what do you, you know, how do we? When, when, when do we have to know what those final numbers are, I guess, is what I'm asking.
It really depends on how long the negotiations take. You know, we would talk about what we think we could budget for, um, but you know, I have sat through negotiations not in Shootsberry that have gone beyond the budget season and they've had to be retroactive. Um, but again, Caitlin and I, um, are here to consult and I know in past negotiations in all of the towns, we've had somebody from the town there as well. So, um, yes, you're the two negotiating agents, but there's help and support.
Okay, is there a member from the town of Shootsberry that would go with us? Right, because you, I, you had just mentioned that somebody in.
Yeah, in, yeah, in other towns, we've sometimes had someone who's, who's come or who's we've consulted with.
I just didn't know what Shootsberry had done.
And Caitlin, not to volunteer, she's super helpful with numbers and ideas and scenario A, scenario B, scenario C, so.
And I, I do not sit on the, this committee thankfully and, um, uh, but it's, it, I don't remember there being a town person on a Shootsberry committee in the past and I've, I've seen two contracts through here. So.
Just a curiosity question.
Three, two, maybe, I don't know.
I think three, Jackie. We've done three.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I cannot volunteer for this.
Okay. Is there anybody with I'm sorry?
I'll volunteer. I'll be one of the volunteers.
Thank you, Jeremy.
You're welcome.
Okay. Do we have a motion for Jeremy?
I moved.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Heard I.
Rose, I.
Got to vote for myself.
I can do it.
I move that Bethany serve on the negotiation committee.
Oh, thank you so much, Bethany. Seconded.
Okay.
I feel better now, too.
Heard I.
Why?
Martha.
Okay. All right, so at this point, I will reach out to our attorney to start the ball rolling. Okay. I will CC you, Jeremy, on all communication.
Have a quick question. This is association with the teachers in the entire district? Not just Chutesbury? No.
Just Chutesbury.
Yes, Chutesbury is its own district.
Also, Bethany, if you want to CC Pam, that's real helpful, then she kind of keeps track of all of the meeting dates, and if Adam is busy and doesn't respond, she sort of reaches out and gently nudges. So oh, bless CC. I say that every day, but yes, just CC her. Okay. Thank you. Sorry, I'm just making notes, so I know what I'm doing. Okay, that hurdle jumped. Moving on to reports, superintendent report. You're muted. Sorry, I minimized myself, and then I couldn't find my unmute button. I will be brief tonight. As we know, we're in budget season. Caitlin and I have met with all of the principals to create draft budgets, and we will be sharing those at meetings through the winter time. We have done some literacy walkthroughs in October. We have shared the feedback from the individual walkthroughs on a school-wide basis to all of our schools. November and December will bring equity walkthroughs. It's our first time using the tool. So when we're finished all of our equity walkthroughs, I'll be more than happy to share some information. As you know, we have a screening committee for the superintendent search. There's a great and wide range of members, and they'll be gathering feedback and sharing information as we move through the process. Irving continues to meet to examine the pros and cons of staying in or leaving Union Twenty Eight. And we will keep you up to date with any meetings and information that comes from that. They're open meetings, and you're more than welcome to join. They're typically at the Irving Town Library. And lastly, we met with Commissioner Riley, a superintendent, to discuss the issue of chronic absenteeism. It's generally defined at our state level as missing at least ten percent of the school year, which is roughly eighteen days. The problem really was worsened by the pandemic, and as we know, as educators, this has lasting effects. Absenteeism does on student learning and academic achievement. We are also measured on absenteeism rates on MCAS, and so it's not just a problem here in Massachusetts. It's really across our country. And as a leadership team, we created a letter to share with families, and we're just asking all of our families, you can't help when you're sick, but really be conscious of when students are or are not in school, and if there are some school avoidance issues, you certainly can reach out to the principal at the school counselors, and we'll do all we can to support getting our kids back in school. And that's my report briefly this evening.
Suzie, go ahead.
Um, I understand that Irving is still meeting. Is there any timeline? Do they have any idea when they'll come to this decision? The finance committee asked me to ask.
It doesn't seem that they have any timeline at this particular point.
Okay, and now moving on to the big thing, draft our budget. So Caitlin, take it away.
Sure. So first, I'll start by saying that the end of year report is has an audit every three years. Because we are a single school municipality, they allow us to only get audited once every three years, but we're up for that. So probably the next meeting, I will be asking you to approve for an audit to go forward for the end of year report. And then I have the draft budget. Let me share. So I'm going to start with the draft budget, and then I did at the two weeks ago, I said some other budget summaries of things without some of our our main drivers. So this is the draft budget. It is a our first look at what the needs of the school are, which on our summary page does have a big increase of the total use of funding of seven point two seven percent and net total per ton appropriation of seven point seven nine percent. And let's go through some of those key pieces. So in line one, the school committee contracted services, there has been an increase in Medicaid reporting contracted services. And line four, there will not have to be an audit for our FY twenty four end of year report, so we will not have to budget that for for FY twenty five. So we're able to decrease that. In line seventeen, we had an increase in so let me back up. The first section is all administrative costs. And lines six through twenty eight are all Union Twenty Eight costs that are already approved through the Union Twenty Eight budget. So any of the ones that start with U twenty eight have already been approved. Those have moved forward. But I will kind of talk about some of those little pieces. So the increase in line seventeen for office supplies is to match the the spending that we've been doing for office supplies because of the just increase in the cost of those office supplies. And for line twenty three, the travel for my position, it returned to in-person meetings. When we go down to the instruction lines, we have a huge estimate. We don't know what the contract is going to look like for next year. We have we have not even begun negotiations, and so we don't know. These are really kind of estimates on what we think the salary lines are going to look like, and because all of the teachers and other staff members are all together, it is every single salary line in the in the budget outside of Union Twenty Eight and the principal. So because it's a contract year, these are these are estimates. We know that there are always going to be step increases and salary increases columns, and so they're estimates. It's early. For line thirty eight therapeutic services, there is a point five counselor moved to the general budget. This was an Essar funded position that Jackie and Jen and I would really like to see continue in the school, and if I'm Jack, if you want to speak to that, this is a good time.
That is the adjustment counselor that we have part time that is shared with Leverett. It's an invaluable piece. It was put in using Essar money. And that Essar money is now gone. And in this day and age, you know, we only have a point eight psychologist who also has to do all of the psych testing. And there's not meant to be necessarily the school counselor, although she will operate that way because she's amazing. But we really need an adjustment counselor, and it will be the committee's, you know, decision whether to go ahead and move that into the general budget. Or else we won't be able to fund it anymore. And that would
And I will note that we have moved that in every budget across Union Twenty Eight and all of our schools. We appreciate the money that the Commonwealth gave to us and the federal government to support learning loss and social, emotional, and mental health after the pandemic. However, those, just because the Essar money disappears, doesn't mean those issues disappear, and I can just tell you feel very strongly that this is a needed position as we move forward, still resolving mental health issues and learning loss from COVID. So it's our profession and attendance. So it's our professional recommendation that we keep the counselor.
Suzie, do you have a question?
Yeah, do you want questions as we go along? Is that okay?
I think that's okay.
Okay, so I just because I will bring this to the FinCom, and we'll answer questions. In line thirty nine, the therapeutic services, is that one person that's shared with Leverett, or is it multiple people in that line?
It's one person. So it's one that is a point five at Leverett and a point five at Chutesbury.
So a hundred and thirty three thousand is all of it or half of it?
That is half of the salary of one person. The
Oh, no, therapeutic services is bigger, right? It's not just the counselor.
Yes, it's not just the counselor. The change and the change is the counselor. The forty thousand is the counselor, not the not the one thirty three.
That's what I was asking. So there's more than one person in the line. But the forty thousand is our half that used to be paid by Essar, and Leverett's paying forty thousand also.
Well, hold on. It's also the step and colas for everyone else in the therapeutic services line.
Okay, all right. Yeah, I get that.
Jeremy, go ahead.
So I have two questions. One is, as a member of the negotiating subcommittee, how did you come up with the estimate for the salary, salary increase estimates under the budget line? Like, what did you use to?
So we use a percentage based on the last couple of negotiating groups that have gone through, and it's an estimate, sort of an average of those.
Okay. And the other question I had, and I know this is highly unlikely, but if Leverett didn't vote, you know, didn't move their point five into their budget, what would happen if we accepted that, but then they didn't?
Sure, then the person we have that would be a point five position could either either continue as a point five position at Chutesbury, or we would have, we would post for a point five adjustment counselor position.
Okay, thank you.
So they're they're disconnected, so we don't have to have the same person. We're looking for a point five adjustment counselor in our budget. So I'll continue down to substitute salaries. We we would like to increase that line to thirty thousand dollars from twenty six thousand to thirty thousand because we have continued to we've overspent that line, and if we still had a twenty six, we'd probably still overspend that line. So we're looking to adjust that line to meet the the actual spending of of what we need for substitutes in the school.
And the pay has gone up for that, too.
Yes. And it's hard to find substitutes. So I'm glad the pay has gone up because we need to be able to have have substitutes in the building when when teachers are out. So of other noteworthy things, the line fifty seven for instructional software materials, we've increased that line, but then to increase for subscription costs, because a lot of the subscriptions we have have gone up in price.
Caitlin, can I stop you for one minute? We've got questions popping up.
Yep.
Suzie, and then Anna.
So is are the substitutes rate going up in this year, or wasn't that was that last year? Or or is there an increase also in this year?
No, it was last year, and that's why part of the reason why our our amount was up for the last year.
Okay.
Anyhow.
Okay.
It has not gone up again.
Okay.
Hannah?
So line forty three is that must be only one person. How is all of line forty three twenty three thousand dollars?
I can answer that. Caitlin, you want me to answer that?
Sure.
So Caitlin and I struggle with line forty three and forty four, because, and this is a good thing for you to know, too. Suzie, for the town, is that we don't have any paras that do not have special education roles. So there's not any para in our building that does not provide some sort of special education support. So I just want to, so I think that's why it's kind of strange to have those two lines, because all of them at some point have some special education pieces or supports to students. And so I think there was one para that we had in that line that didn't, but actually does, you know, within within the general classroom setting as well. So that's why that Caitlin, sorry if I botched that, but like, that's basically the problem.
That was good. So we have to break apart those two lines for reporting reasons of whether a para educator is for specialization purposes or general education. And so but the school has seen more and more of of like, every para is is a necessity for the special education for IEPs, and so we have moved from, I think, a few, Jackie, correct me if I'm wrong, I think it was like two or three down to one general education, then the rest were in special education. And so we still keep the lines separate for reporting reasons. But we do look at every single line. And so you may wonder, like, how do we come up with these salary lines? Like, how do we know how much is going to be spent for therapeutic services? Well, we have to look at every single person that's in those positions right now, and that even could change before the budget is approved in in a couple months. But it's a a projection of if nothing changed right now, if the person that's in that position is the same, and they're going to have a cola and a step increase and maybe a column increase, then what is it going to be for next year? So we see these kind of slight increase and decreases in some of the lines based on personnel that are in those positions. So that is sort of a strange one, because it's just one position, and it is kind of one person that is in that position.
And just philosophically, that's going to shift even more as we go on, when when there's a big movement in the special education world for a lot of push-in services. And when you have a lot of push-in services, it means that para educators are under the supervision of some of the special education teachers. some of the special education teachers supporting the needs of students with IEPs. And so that's something, you know, that is happening in a lot of places. And so that's a shift that's going to generally be happening in terms of para educator allotment.
So going down to other school services. The large one here is just the special education transportation line. We have to increase that line to meet student needs. Plan operations and maintenance. We're going to monitor them throughout the year because we, if you look at a line like line seventy-five for fuel, we were, the actual for FY twenty-two was nineteen thousand four thirty-five. And then it went up to forty-four thousand five fifty-three. And so we budgeted thirty-five thousand last year. And we'd liked to budget thirty-five thousand this year, but we're not sure what the, what price we're going to lock in for FY twenty-five is going to be. That doesn't happen until February, maybe March. And it depends on what, when we work with the collaborative to see when should we lock in a price for fuel. That may not be until later in the spring, early summer, if they feel like that's a time that we should lock in. So we lock into the best time that we know and we collaborate with them. But we just don't know what fuel is going to look like, but we will monitor that, our usage of fuel, what our winter looks like and what the price is going to be. So a lot of our, our school power, our fuel lines, they are, they're just going to be monitored and you will see those lines change. We do have, we did have a reduction in the networking and telecommunications line. That was one that we had an increase in last year when we moved our, our accounting system on to the school, from Union twenty-eight to the school budgets. But since there was a one-time training and the facilitation of, of the, of that movement costs, we did, we were able to reduce that line because those first year fees. Fixed charges have remained about the same, a little bit less because the Union twenty-eight portion is a little less for Chootsberry this year. Their allocation went down a little bit. And with programming, programs with other schools, line ninety-six, we do have an increase because we just have a need for tuition for another school. So when we look at our revenue sources, the Title I amount, I would like to decrease our reliance on Title I so we can have that primarily focus on the, the personnel that is, that is funded through Title I, the teacher, and then then we're not so dependent on decreasing the budget, decreasing our supply lines to be able to, to use for Title I. Same thing for Title II. Title IV remain the same. IDEA is, I'd like to decrease a little tiny bit to forty thousand. So we're just using it for salaries and not for other purposes. Because every time we say, well, we're going to use forty-two thousand dollars, then we have to take forty-two thousand dollars off the budget. And so we may take thirty-five thousand dollars because we're funding one of the, one of the salaries in the budget, but that also means we take more money from one of the supply lines. We will decrease the American Rescue Plan IDEA and American Rescue Plan IDEA Early Childhood. And, but we have increased the, their early childhood revolving. We think that's a pretty healthy revolving fund and we would like to increase that.
That's the money we get for preschool tuition.
Yes. We'd also like to increase rural aid from sixty to sixty-five thousand dollars. We received more in rural aid this year. And I know that we're receiving more than sixty-five thousand dollars this year, but it is a kind of a fickle source of income. And so we'd like to increase a little bit, but not so much that we're outstretching our budget.
And I do just want to point out, you know, Caitlin, rural aid is dependent a lot on, is it per capita?
It's a per capita income. So once you breach the, this year it was like fifty-eight thousand four hundred dollar per capita income amount, then you are no longer qualified for rural aid. So we saw another district go from receiving rural aid to no rural aid altogether.
And I just, the reason why I'm bringing this up is that from my observation, just within our early childhood revolving fund, we went, you know, this is my tenth year when I first, from when I started until really a few years ago. That was not a healthy account in terms of the amount of money that we were billing for full, for full price daycare. And that has shifted drastically since we got internet and after COVID. And so our demographic in the town is, is growing in a way that it would not shock me if eventually the per capita piece in Chootsberry would be too high to receive rural aid. So I just, I don't know if that will happen next year or even the year after. I'm just wanted to alert you to a trend that I'm seeing within the school-based money.
So here are the school choice and Esser grant trends and allocations. For school choice, RE SL teacher at point four refunded for this year. That funding has to go up for next year because we have salary increases. Essential skills teacher, same thing. Speaking and language pathologist at a point two. We just see increases and, and salaries. Math coach. So we're not, we are not increasing the amount of full-time or increasing the amount of part-time of these positions. It's just an increase in the salary line, the projected salary line, because we are going through negotiations.
And I also, I also wanted to point something out here, if you don't mind. These were positions that were, or, or extended positions or supported, more time-supported positions that were done through Esser. And, and you know, over the years, there's been this big back and forth with the town around, you know, what are our guidelines around using school choice? And we, we have been very clear and this committee might want to make a stance on that differently. But we have been very clear that we would only fund positions that were not that we could, even if difficult, with a difficult manner function without. So it is my opinion that our school is in such a good spot that it is, is because we have some of this support. But we would still be able to operate without them, which is why we're putting them into school choice. Because we don't want to put necessary positions into the general.
I, yeah, in the general budget. I think that's key, Jackie, because we've seen other districts over-rely on school choice to fund general budget positions. And then it gets tricky because if in fact school choice money was less coming in, then there would be essential positions that would have to be cut. I also want to point out that I think we're spending money well because Chootsberry is really performing well when we look at not just our MCAS data, but our local data as well. So this is school choice money that is really well spent. And it's evidenced by the performance and growth of our students. So the second portion, the Esser grants, this is, I use the same spreadsheet that I, I used last year, but just added a new column. Which is that last year we were able to fund a point five adjustment counselor and a full-time para educator out of Esser grants. And this year that's zeroed out because Esser grant is, is gone. So that has been taken and worked into the general budget. So I don't, I have some, I have the budget projections for what it would look like if we didn't have some of the, the high budget items. And these are not to say, what if we did without, but is to say, what does our budget look like without these drivers?
Before we go on to that, could I ask a question about the school choice in that?
Yeah, absolutely.
I know Nature's Classroom has been a program that's been funded out of, I believe it's been funded out of choice. And it's not in this list. Is, what would happen to a funding for that kind of program?
Well, and it would, next year will, would be a Nature's Classroom year. We're doing it every, our proposal was to do it every other year and that's about ten thousand dollars.
Okay. Thank you.
So this is, I'm not sure how to use Zoom. If I change tabs, do you see the different things or do I have to go back?
Well, I just saw what you clicked on.
Oh, you did? Okay, good. It says without Esser-funded position. Is that what you wanted to say? That's what I meant to do. Thank you.
Okay.
So this is the budget summary. If we did not include the Esser-funded position, the point five adjustment counselor, here's what our budget would look like. Our total use of funding is a five point seven seven percent increase and our net total for town appropriation is a six point one eight percent increase. So let me go back because now I know I can to the summary here, which has us at a seven point two seven percent increase, a total use of funding and total net total for town appropriation of seven point seven nine. So a slight decrease. But I don't think it's a, a large decrease and the value add of having that position in school I think is well worth the percentage increase from a professional expertise point of view. And then people can continue to discuss it. I also think we may see more behavioral issues and we could even see a lack of academic growth without this really important position. Because not only, when you address behavior, it also allows a student to access the academic curriculum because that barrier has been removed. So again, I feel that we're lucky to have who we have, but I also feel very strongly that that position is needed.
And Jen, I think that you're right where we had for COVID recovery, particularly, we had such incredible plans as a school, community. And the proof is it, the proof is in all of the data that we have that it's, it worked for us. And it's, and our school is really strong. And if we start to take away those pieces that we have, you know, I think the data could show that, you know, for sure.
I agree, Jackie. A hundred percent.
Suzy?
And I'm wondering, this is not a Chootsberry problem. The fact that Esser is disappearing is everybody's problem. But the state is all, as far as I know, the state is making noise about mental health issues across the state. So do you know if there's any attention to funding some from the state, if not from the feds, for mental health support, which is what the adjustment counselor is?
I mean, I haven't heard of anything directly from the commissioner. They have talked about financial support that would address chronic absenteeism, but I'm not sure what that looks like. And as we know, typically, most of the money tends to go to the bigger school districts out east. But certainly as the state starts to decide their budget, we may hear more. And as soon as I know anything legislatively, I would share it with the committee and the towns.
But I think something I, I just wanted to bring up and then Caitlin, you can do your job, director person, but is this slide in particular, I think is really important because what that shows is a cost of a program with another school that we are obligated to pay, that we have to pay. Without that piece, as you can see, the, the rise to the budget is not a lot. And I think when, when we were scrolling through, I don't, I hope you noticed how many level funded lines there are. I mean, we, the, the really only things that are higher are the, having to pay them for the new contract salaries, the out-of-district placement and transportation, and then the additional adjustment counselor piece. So we're not asking for literally anything else. And I think that's a really important thing, particularly for Suzy, to talk about with these committees is that these are kind of have-tos, you know, they're not like, can I please have? And I just think that's a really important distinction. And that's why I really like this slide.
Yes, I agree. And and also it's down the road, but something to think about if our Union twenty-eight elementary schools, whoever's left staying with us ever regionalized. We may be able to do something in district and then wouldn't have to, not that we send a lot of students out. We do a really good job of keeping our kids. But sometimes the need is there for that child to get an appropriate education. But if we were regionalized, something like this, this budget flip-flop that happens may be ameliorated by being a region. And sorry, this was a, you know, the last page, but from my own experience, from my two kids that are thirteen, eleven, they, one of them depends very heavily on the adjustment counselor at their school. And I feel very strongly that this is a position that needs to be funded. So this slide is the budget summary without our, our amount that we, that we are spending on the programs with other schools. And then finally, if, if Esser didn't end, if we had no of these other ones, this is like really what the school is asking for. We are asking for a two point one nine percent increase in funding. We have level funded, we have decreased. We have looked at, Jackie's amazing. When, when I said to Jackie, when we look at the budget, she's, can look at every line and say, do we need that? I don't know if we need that. Let's reduce that. What is that looking like? Can we monitor that? And so it's really a two point three one percent increase on our budget without the, the kind of the special education have-tos and without the, the ask for the adjustment counselor. Suzy, do you have a question?
Yeah, I, I'm a little confused. So on the previous slide, which is just without other program, programs with other schools, you, I thought you said that there's an obligation to some of those programs. So I'm not sure how you can project not, not doing it.
So it's on projection of if we could do away with this cost. It is just an isolation of what our school is asking for. What are our amount that these, the general budget is, is increasing outside of those costs that we have to have. So again, it's, it's not, I'm not saying like, if we could do away with this, this is what it'd be. It's, this is what the budget would look like. And the final, you know, on this one, that we are actually asking for in our local budget compared to last year.
But I guess I, but we are obliged to participate in programs that other schools are part of. Right now, it, our, Are, do we have an obligation there?
Yes.
Yes, that's not a, it's not an option. Suzie, this is just sort of saying like, this is the budget that we have control over. This is the stuff that shoots berries asking for. The other stuff is just committed. Because we don't, we we don't control it because they just assign us those costs. So if if we were fully in control of our budget and. The difference in what we're asking for just for shootsberries. Control. This is the increase that we're looking at and this is the difference in our budget from last year. The the union twenty eight differences that we're just can. They just get assigned to us. We don't get a choice on how much we allocate to those particular costs. We just. That's our portion of the cost and we also don't have a. In this committee, don't have a lot of control over. Um, saying yes or no to those additional costs. So this is just saying. Jackie's asking for this much more money. Kind of.
Yeah, I I mean, I guess I'm not, I'm not trying to make it confu- we're not trying to make it confusing. What I want the town to realize, because I know when they see the percentage increase, it's going to be like, oh, my gosh. And there's going to be a lot of chitter chatter around that, but I want them to see that. You know, we do have an out of, out of district placement that including transportation, you know, it's like fifty eight for tuition and like. Thirty something for transportation like, but those are costs that we're obligated to do and that's not me being like, please give me this money. Because I think it would help. It's like, no, actually, we have to pay that. And so that has to be part of it. But what I, what that last slide means is that. If we didn't have that obligation, the school itself is really not asking for a seven point blah, blah, blah percent increase. We're really asking for a two point, what now, whatever that was, it's not this slide, percent increase. And um and. Because we are operating right now with the with the counselor as part of our school community. And so, I mean, that would be a big loss. If we didn't have that piece, it would be really, really hard um. And so. It's not like an additional piece. We've been operating with it. It's just now needing to be funded out of general budget.
I guess I understand, I certainly understand it. I'm. I'm just going to have to face a committee and and explain, and that's why I'm trying to get this clear. Um, and I under. So when it says um. Budget summary um without programs of other schools, are you saying that the out of district placement? Is on that slide? We we ha- we have to do that. I mean, I see that in the budget, I see that in the basic budget that was lined out. But when you.
I I guess we are trying to be clear, but clearly not. We were trying to say like. Just funding. Shootsberry Elementary General Budget is the two point three one percent or two point one nine percent. However, Esther funding is now taken away from us and we have this. One off program with other school that we are obligated. So I think we were trying to be clear about like what we need to function is this and then we have lots of funding. And additional costs.
Right.
So maybe it wasn't as clear as we thought it was.
Yeah, I I feel like it's uh I'll work to explain it, but I I think it, this looks like an option. It is not an option to place that person in another program. So I didn't know what other schools meant. You mean the out of district placement. That's that's the only one you mean. And then the S R funded one, I understand that part. Um, and I, I guess I feel. I will make it clear, we have no choice about the um out of district placement. So. Really, the one, the slide that says budget summary without. Program with another school is is uh really irrelevant. There's no way it can be otherwise. So uh I I don't want people to start making choices as if these are choices. When there's not a choice on that one. And then if if they. They need to understand what the S R funded and why it did, and then they get to make that choice. Um, to work it into the general budget and some members of the FinCom have always wanted. Some of the stuff to be worked into the general budget. So I I understand. I I personally think an adjustment counselor is not a a choice. But I would say for sure that the program with other schools is not a choice because that child has to be educated. That's our obligation.
Well, that's why it's good you come to these meetings, Suzie, because you're the town representative. Who can say like, that's confusing or that seems clear. So we totally appreciate feedback. Right.
Yeah, let me throw that Suzie um coming and asking questions and. Um, and answering them and anytime you want to email me with questions, I really appreciate it. Because then we can clarify anything in the next couple of months and then.
Yep.
It it also just, you know, just putting it out there, it feels like a perfect storm year because it's the. It's the. Contract negotiation salary pay increase and and then the first year we have to show the out of district cost on the general budget. And so, and then Esther ran up. So so it's like this perfect storm of bad.
Right. And there's a, the sub, the superintendent thing is up in the air and how much. Other um towns will be involved in sharing the expenses. So yeah, it's it's I've never seen anything like this. It's great. But uh but I didn't understand that that um the programs with other school was actually the out of district placement. I get it now.
I appreciate you asking.
I have a quick question.
Sure.
So um first of all, I just want to say. I also totally support moving the adjustment counselor into the general budget. Um. I think it is a critical position and I hope that the town can support that. Um, but I also wanted to ask a quick question about fuel use. And um with like the building. I don't know if it's the building committee or the. How are we doing now that the roof is repaired? I'm wondering if we're. Doing better on energy saving and then also like. Are there steps that we could take to make our building more efficient? I know that um. It seems like. Solar's not a great option or something like that, but I'm just wondering like what are the? What are the steps that the school is taking to create energy efficiency? Um, so that maybe we don't have to rely on the fuel quite as much. Uh, well, I can just tell you some of the, I can tell you some of the things we've done, um but. A lot of the building based things isn't actually a school based decision. It's the buildings committee and the town's decision. Um, but we um, you know, we have the new roof, which is excellent. And then we also uh threw a grant. Over the summer had. I'm gonna, the term is going to be uh hard for my brain right now, but we like, we had people come in and like weatherize things. So. They did like insulation around the windows and the doors and. Other things, I think, but they did come in over the summer and do it, but those are the two biggest. Pieces in terms of energy. It's still too early in the year. I don't think we turned on the heat. Till October something, so um it's, I can't give you figures around. If our our fuel stuff compared to last year yet, maybe I can in January, um because the bills come a month later, as you know. And I'm happy to report on it then, but um that's all I can kind of say around those pieces right now. Thanks.
Yes, I think they're going to be lines that will be monitored through the year um. We can look at kind of. Fuel um saving expen- measures. Um, as it come up, uh there was also, there was an H V A grant. Given to schools like qualified for C um C E P. That one of the schools received and since the um C E P amount. Changed and more schools should qualify, then we're interested to see if that will apply to further schools. That are that are becoming C E P status. Jen, you will have to tell me again what C E P stands for. Community.
Community eligibility program.
Thank you. So that was what um. When uh when schools received funding for every student to receive free lunch. But since now every student receives free lunch, but there's still a C E P status. And that does make you eligible for further grants and. And we'll see if there are ones that coming up in the future that we can, we can qualify for.
Jen, your hands up. Did you want to add anything?
I was just wondering if the fuel cost for last year included when the generator got stuck on. And how much extra that ran into if that goes into that at all?
That was not, no, that's not on there and that. That's like, that was also a negotiation with Becky because the school. Um, I'm trying to remember about how we divided it. The school paid for some of it, but I don't know if our budget paid for all of it. I I have to check in with Becky on that because it is a. An emergency shelter and so that is one of the main reasons why that generator is there. So I I'd have to check with Becky. She's great about. Getting back to me on that stuff, so I can easily do that for you, Jen, if you want.
Sorry, were you waiting for a response? I just was gonna say that really, it's it's fine. You don't have to check on it. I just was wondering if it was in there. Included or.
Yeah, there was also some repairs to the generator that were extremely significant in terms of price. Okay, is there anything else, any other questions regarding the draft budget? Caitlin, is there anything else that you need, right at this point that you need from us in regards to the draft budget?
No, Jess, I I hope that you spend the um the next month before our next meeting to. Think about it, have any questions. Um, always feel free to email me directly with questions and. Um, we will. Continue to work on it, monitor lines and um and. Present our our kind of next draft at the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. I know budgeting is not easy. I feel your pain. Okay, next is the principals report.
All right, I'll be really quick since you just heard from me a lot too. Um, so budgeting has taken up a lot of our time. Uh, we also had parent conferences or family conferences. I've, a lot of you were in the building in the past few weeks. Um, we have, we just finished up um a learning walk in Union Twenty Eight as Jen talked about. Um, we're focused around equity, which was really um interesting and eye opening. Um, and. Um, something that I saw that shootsberry really show. Sh- shined bright on was um, as you know, we are using the E L curriculum in English Language Arts. And that curriculum has a giant focus in social justice within um its work. And it really was apparent in the student work that we saw. Um, all around the school and some of the content and the lessons that we saw. The social justice pieces shining through the students' work and the quality of the literature. Um, and um it just really reaffirmed my. Gratefulness in our staff and all of the work we did around choosing a curriculum and I, it really made me feel and that along with our data. Um, it tells me that like we really made the right choice and we're we're really heading in the right direction. So that was really great. We've, we've had some field trips. We had some of our older kids go to the the U Mass multiband concert. The third grade today was escorted by the shootsberry police and they walked up to the library in town where they had. Uh, a town author come in and read to them and they made bookmarks and they checked out books and they had snacks. And this was to culminate their first unit in E L this year. Um, and that was all about. Um, libraries around the world and the equity of literacy and books, um which was really awesome. And just the last one, because it's eight thirty, is that um we're, we're, I'm partnering with um the P T O. Thank you, Anna. Uh, and we're doing a bingo for books next Tuesday. It's our first one. We're really excited about it and um. We're looking forward for a December event and that's about it for now.
Great, thank you. Uh, Amherst Pelham, do we have a report for that?
Oh, so much fun. Um, so. The. Subcommittee for search for a new superintendent. Um, we renamed our subcommittee because people didn't like the S S S initials. So now it's S N S. We have recommended to the. Whole committee uh to hire the McPherson and Jacobson um head hunting firm or search firm. To run our our search. We ended up with like five people submitting proposals. We had to publicly. Had a, we had to post it for public bid and then when we posted it for the bid. One of the companies who had a, who had expressed interest originally submitted a proposal that just um was missing a few. Components and we were not able to rate them as. Um, a qualified proposal. And so of the three. Um, that were qualified, um only one really had. Experience with superintendent searches and the other two are just sort of like general search firms. Um, and so we did end up with the the one. Um, the full committee approved that. And now we just have to figure out how to sign a contract with them because it's a little tricky because. Doug is still. Kind of the finance director and having. The superintendent sign this. Anyway, it's a little complicated, so we're, we're working through that. The next biggest topic on our agenda is um the at the track and field. Replacement at the high school and that's coming up to be um quite a fun. Controversial topic as well. Um, a lot has changed since the original decision was made and um. You know, I think the boosters and some of other other people really wanted uh an artificial turf because they felt like it was. It extended the playing time as well as. I don't know, I think they they saw it as being like cooler or something. I'm not sure. But now costs of turf fields have gone up and um environmental concerns and. Other things have come into play and so the the whole debate is coming around again and so. Um, there's. Uh, a lot of talk about trying to figure out how to. Potentially reconsidered the decision and so the town may be asked at some point. Um, to partially fund this athletic field. Suzie. They, I think the regional district um rescinded or withdrew their request for funding. Last time it came around. But if it becomes a new option to consider a grass field, they may. Reintroduce it to shootsberry to see if we are willing to offer up some. Uh, money for it. Um. So that's on the table again. Um, and then the superintendent has, you know. Tried to keep us updated on some of the ongoing LGBTQ um training that's happening at the middle school. And uh. They have a new bullying system that um is supposed to be working, but uh we're having a little bit of trouble trying to figure out how well it's being used. And how um. How well it's being responded to. So. Um, I think those are the big issues. Oh, yeah, yeah. We're, so we're going to be posting a, an interest form for the search committee or the screening, the the interview committee, I guess. I guess it's the search. So we're getting, uh, we're creating a committee of people who will look at all of the resumes. Select candidates for interviewing, interview. The first round of candidates and then recommend finalists to the full committee. Um, and that interest form is going to go up sort of the beginning, middle of December. And we are hoping that somebody from shootsberry will show interest. Steve. Is your hand really up, Steve?
Oh, ye- yes, it is. So I just want to say with the whole track issue. That I sat on that study committee from two thousand seventeen to nineteen. And the issue with the track is that it was supposed to be resurfaced in two thousand and two and has not been resurfaced yet. And the whole thing with the, the artificial turf versus, versus actual grass. Was that the PFAS studies about how bad artificial turf were. Didn't come out until three to four months after we had decided and took that vote that we wanted the artificial turf just because it lasts longer. So that's how that whole mess came around was because the studies came out just after we had taken our vote. Thank you.
Good to know.
Suzie.
And I want to reiterate that there's a four-town meeting on December sixteenth at nine o'clock. And yeah, so that's another good time to hear what's on the news and see what other town, how towns are handling stuff.
Yeah, I'm not sure that I'm going to have definitive answers by then because it's still. Being debated in the school committee right now about that there is a debt authorization that would have to be. Presended or amended. So. Still being discussed.
Okay, thank you, Anna. So moving on to the Union twenty-eight report, I do want to apologize because I jumped over Julie and the superintendent search. So please step in and do that now. I apologize.
Okay, I'm on it. I figured it would come around on this one anyway. So. Okay, so report out for superintendent search committee. So the superintendent brochure and application are posted on MASC. Their site and it's on the Union twenty-eight site under employment. The committee discussed, so the last time we met, we discussed the. Rubric we would use to evaluate applications and also reviewed, we're all. Reviewing potential interview questions. We're going to meet again on December eleventh to discuss those interview questions and next steps. And we'll begin reviewing applications as soon as. They become available. The timeline for all of this is. And we did have to push this out actually, but so the application deadline is the nineteenth of December. We have, and, and I can send this in an email by the way, or you can look in the notes. I sent it to you, Trevor, just so you could have it available. So the application deadline is the nineteenth of December. Semi-finalists will be selected by the fifth of January. Interviews of those folks will be conducted virtually from January twelfth to the sixteenth. Then we're hoping to have finalists selected by the nineteenth of January. And then we would do finalist site visits and interviews. So that would be. The finalists coming here to speak and also us going to their districts to see how things are there. And then we're hoping for an appointment date. By February sixteenth with a start date of July first. And that all had to be submitted with our information to MASC for the advertisement. So. That is that. We're sharing everything on a Google Drive so that we can. Share information. Yeah, I don't know. If anyone has questions, I'm happy to try to answer them. But we are not having headhunters do this. This is a group, a ragtag group of us. Who are meeting pretty much every other week to keep going through the details of this and hammering it out. And we have a really great, I will say, chair of that committee who is doing a great job and. All of the committee members have been really forthcoming and volunteering to do huge chunks of the work. So it is. It's slow going, but I think it's pretty steady progress.
Anna, do you have a question?
Yeah, I was just, when did you say you posted the? Job description or the job posting?
I said that we posted it on the MASC site and the Union twenty-eight site. When we did it, I think it was November twentieth.
Okay. So you said that it's slow going, but you are vastly outpacing the RSC.
I mean, let me just be clear. When I say slow going, listen. We have to thread this needle and there has been debate about how we're doing this. But basically, we have to make steady progress because. In order to have someone in place by July first. If you move back from that date, they need to be able to give ninety days notice. So we need to have told them before, you know, ninety days before July first. So. We have like, kind of, we have to kind of thread this needle of like, we need to advertise it long enough to get a good applicant pool. But also we cannot slow down progress on that. And even in the last few weeks, I've seen more. Superintendent searches being added to MASC. So I think we've really hit it at the right. Spot of like, we're not too far behind, but we might have been if we had slowed even a couple of weeks. So I, I think we're good. We are not. I have heard that, yeah, that. You know, we might get a handful. We don't, we don't necessarily think we'll be getting like twenty applicants. We might be getting like. Five to seven applicants and we'll find a great candidate in there. And honestly, if we don't see a great candidate in there, then we'll talk about what we need to do. So that we can. Figure out who the next. I did ask Jen right at the beginning of the policy committee meeting, but she has said that she is staunchly leaving. So. It's fine, we'll continue. But that option is apparently off the table, so.
Although it is very hard to say no to you, Julie Martel.
You should totally talk to my kids because they're fine with it. Anyway, but so ends that. And I think I'll throw it back to the Union twenty-eight. I'm happy to weigh in as I random, like I missed the meeting, but I actually watched the video afterwards like a nerd. So.
So glad you did that, Julie. Such a good use of your time on that last meeting.
Yeah, yeah. And she's texting me while she's doing it to ask me questions. So Union twenty-eight update and feel free to jump in. We met on the twentieth, so. Is that last Monday, last week? I feel like a lot of this, that what occurred in the meeting, we've already touched on. My only addition to the update was that. In my observation, it appears Leverett is really struggling with. The SR funds and the adjustment counselor. At one point, there was an suggestion to have a meeting between Chutesberry and Leverett. Cause I think. Just to get an idea what we were thinking, I'm not entirely sure, but Leverett is definitely struggling with that. So. That was my observation. At the meeting, I don't know if any Jeremy or Julie, if you want to.
I was just gonna say, a lot of it was taken up with some questioning around the Irving study. And I don't think we got a lot of straightforward answers. We're kind of pointed to look at the official minutes and the files, which I tried to do and. It was hard to kind of come up with and eventually we were able to get the letters and get them the newspaper article, but. It's kind of hard. It, it feels like people are really cagey about discussing what the real complaints are. That they just want to do the study and they want to see. And it's like, basically. They're preparing for a theoretical question around town meeting about which is better and they want to have done their homework, I guess, is the clearest answer we got. So that was a lot of the meeting, really.
I will also say that because I feel like it was sort of brought up. In a tertiary way, but that Chutesberry praises were highly sung and we were all very proud of our school. In the discussion of how we were doing with standards and practices and it seems like. We're doing great. And by we're doing great, I mean, you're doing great. And also that I would say it seemed like. The whole, I mean, I don't know if it was directly spoken about, but I feel like. In my opinion. Part of the reason that we are successful in this town and the school specifically. Is that there is a real commitment to the whole child and not just this one. Piece of like, can they add these two numbers together? But it's like, did you eat this morning? Do you feel safe? And I think that that is so like rolled right into the adjustment counselor and the mental health. And I think that literally is in addition to our spectacular teachers. And staff, but that is why we're seeing like really great success for our students. And I think that like wherever we can make that connection, just call it what it is, like that it is. Our kids are treated like whole people who have a range of needs that change every day. That are really listened to and seen and they feel that. And even when you think about like. Can an adjustment counselor help a kid who's having an emotional like issue? Yes, but then that means that that teacher can go back to teaching that lesson and that student can get the time away that they need to like deescalate. And talk about what actually happened and process while they're, or not process, or just sit in a room and pet a dog while they're like. Just coming back to themselves. So I do think those are all wrapped in and. I mean, it's funny because there are a couple of like very. Kind of offhanded, like what even does Chutesberry, like what is the secret sausage, Chutesberry? And like, it's funny, like, I think everyone like piped down because that was not for us to be saying, but we think clearly it is. That there are kids are treated like these people who are, have like so much potential. And everyone in that school is just trying to help them get there. And whatever that is for them. Whether that's them growing from here to here from year to year, or whether that's them being compared to like other places in the state, but that's not even the focus. So any, I'm going to get off my soapbox, but I think it was super clear. That that is what is the secret in the sauce, that and great leadership. So.
I think every time we went through the accountability numbers, which obviously is not the only metric, but like every time it was just like, it wasn't like, it would have been embarrassing to point us out every time. But like, if you're watching the numbers as you're going through, you know, and you're looking at the other school budgets and you're looking at the numbers and you're just like, holy crap, like I am so glad I'm on this school committee. And not one of those other ones having to justify why our budget's that high and that's where we're at. And again, like. Even as a teacher, like I don't want to focus just on accountability numbers, but like it's, it's definitely. Definitely. I mean, I know it's a good school, but like it's amazing what we are able to do in this little building, in this community.
And not to belabor the point, and I know it's. But it also goes to the school committee and the support that the school committee gives to the administration and staff. So. It's not just the school, it's everybody working together. So. I appreciate working with a supporter, the school committee. Like shoot.
You don't know how often I say I appreciate you all. I really, really appreciate you.
Jen, your hands up. Did you want to add anything?
Thank you. Yeah, just super fast. First of all, yes to all of that and thank you. And the feeling is very much mutual. And just for Suzie in presenting to the meetings, just an important point to bring up and it was said earlier, but just to point it out again that. Our budget would go up substantially based on our performance. You know, our budget is based largely. Or at least our federal funding is based largely on performance. And so without the adjustment counselor. I think it's clear that our performance measures would potentially go down, which would also affect the budget negatively. Just putting it out there.
Can I just throw in on that too, that I just feel like, again, when I look, you know, I know the budget concerns that Irving has and whatever, but you look at our numbers. Like every, you know, I, there should be no problem in justifying those costs for our school. That's, I mean, I feel like that's really clear. Based on the Union twenty.
I know, I wonder if we should get that report for Suzie so they can see the, the Irving budget and their staffing. And their, and their performance. It actually though, might be helpful and kind of say. Seeing what we can do with a pretty small in comparison budget. I do think that that would, could be helpful for the town to see. Okay, moving on because we're pushing nine o'clock. Update on the collaborative, do we have one?
No, even with this delay in our meeting, I don't meet with them until next week. So it'll be our next meeting.
Okay. Policy review. So again, it's the first read, so I will trust that everybody can read the, those three policies on their own. So moving on to, this is the second reading and our first vote. On the three policies. So if I can have, just because it goes quickly, one person to move. For each one and then one other person to second and we'll go through. Unless there are questions and discussion that. Are surrounding most of your policies.
Julie, do you want to, oh, sorry.
Yeah, I hate to say this because I don't, I, I would also like to go, but. I specifically on the school councils, I kind of wanted to hear from Jackie about the way that that policy is. Do you feel? Like. I feel like there are some pretty specific points in that about school councils that it seemed like. We kind of blanched at when that first, when the first reading happened. And I wondered. If you like specific, a couple of things that I think specifically were concerned were that. It met every month, it said essentially meets every month. And it also said that it had to follow open meeting. And I don't know that that's what it like, the, our school council was initially set up to be. And so. I guess I just feel like maybe we should table that one and like pump the brakes on that and just have. A little more discussion because I don't want us to get like. Try to rush through and get jammed into a policy that we don't even really fully endorse.
Yes, let's bring that, that one back.
And I think we have to have the open meeting, Julie, but I do want to discuss the, the timeframe.
Yeah, because we did make some tweaks at some other schools about the monthly thing. So let's keep. BDF A off of the vote and we'll. Bring it back in December.
Okay.
Anna, do you have a?
Yeah. Yeah, I just wanted to have a quick question about the non-discrimination policy on the basis of sex. It's very clear that we don't, it says educational programming, I think. Is that, is the language. And. I'm, I'm wondering if we want to specifically add something about bathrooms. And I know that this is. Maybe outside the scope, but. I would like to bake in some protections for gender identity with regards to. Being individuals and recognizing their self-identification and not saying. If you are born a boy, you must use the boys bathroom and sort of bake it into the policy. So that is. If you self-identify as a boy, you can use the boys bathroom. And if you self-identify as a girl, you can use the girls bathroom. And I don't know if there's any ability for. Other genders.
Like, we have gender neutral.
Bathroom that you want to.
We have gender nu- neutral bathrooms now, all of our bathrooms. Yeah, but, but if, but that, if I'm not the, if I was ever not the principal, like that's something that. Is under my leadership, that's what we're doing, right? That's not a policy. So if you did want to. Put in a protection clause, then that would make sense. But I just wanted you to know, we do have all gender neutral bathrooms right now.
put in a protection clause, then that would make sense. But I just wanted you to know, we do have all gender neutral bathrooms right now. It's by grade level. We have grade level bathrooms.
I, I, I think it, we might not always have you as a principal. I would like to bake it into the policy if that's not, if it's possible still.
Well, yeah. So my suggestion is, can we think of some, it's only first read anyway. So Anna or anybody else has some ideas about language that we could bring that back for the second read first vote before we vote on it, we could, um, amend that policy between now and then.
So maybe can I just ask that whoever might want to look at that language in the meantime, and I certainly will as someone on the policy committee, but uh, whoever wants to send any specific language, can we just do that in the next, say, like three weeks so that we're sure that we have time to like make those adjustments before we meet again.
I, um, I work with the Mass Safe Schools Council some through my position at tech, so I'm happy to do some work on that as well and see where other schools have done for that.
So if, if Jeremy sends it out, let's just remember that we can't have a discussion, right? We can just look at the language.
And that's not actually a first vote on, remember that's a first reading. So we're fine. So I move that we hmm, that we approve the BDF A dash E School Improvement Plan Policy. Anyone want a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Heard I.
Martel, I. And then I move that we approve the CHA, CHC Development and Dissemination of Procedures Policy. All right, all in favor?
Heard I.
Are you I?
Taylor, I.
Rose, I.
Martel, I. All right, guys. Well, this was a party, but I think we might need to adjourn.
Yeah, um, just a few things to go through with future business. Um, our next policy committee is December twenty-first. Along with our next school committee on the twenty-first, um, joint supervisory is off until January twenty-second. And just a reminder that we have the four-town meeting on Saturday, December sixteenth. So
lots going on. Settle in with a good brunch on that one.
Okay, if there's nothing further, then I will move to adjourn at eight fifty-six PM.
Second.
Second.
All right. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Good night. Thanks.